Now Thursday morning, it seems like Monday before. We are meeting from yesterday's meeting. We're gonna start this morning with the constables if they have to be here this morning, so.
You want to come up?
Not unless you want to. Is there anything you want to discuss or are you asking for something specific or?
Well, I think we kind of are. I mean, I haven't seen it since we talked.
Well, that's a good thing out there.
Yeah, I figured, but.
You did not figure. You know.
Yeah, you know, we. We have to pay which we have a hundred and forty, but we're just trying to get to about what top debt we pay as a sheriff's office. That was, because honestly, we really don't want to get away with that. We want people coming out of labor for our job. But the main thing we have is I need a vest. I've got a little. I wear just the front and my back. It's just coming apart. It's okay if I get it over five years old. Standard life over the vest is five years. I put seven or so hundred dollars. So that plus my uniform allowance, I'd probably give me a pretty wide weight.
Is that about right? For best of fifty for best youth?
That's seven.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
Seven. And then I know the other constables, Jackson and Estrada, were wanting more training this.
Well, when we initially got into office, we would say the two, two thousand. Then I guess a couple of years ago, you gotta get ten thousand, two thousand. And I do attend several training to keep myself in form. I've got change, a bit in the civil part of it. It constantly changes. I try to make sure I tell them I'm trained for the right. And that's pretty much only thing on my budget that I would request. Other than, I think the constable's got an request for community crime prevention. Prevention account which we get printed material and we can use it and spend it and we cannot add any information across the country. So that's pretty much all.
And I didn't put that in my budget, but I'm gonna try to work and get me some stickers because you did. You wouldn't believe me if we ask, have asked for badges and stickers, pencils. And the state agents, a good thing that we need to meet, you know, is.
You know, they, they, they're right. Are those a plug-in?
Yeah, I think it says we, just, I needed a vest and I needed more training. So they're still working towards their master peace officer or I'm not?
So the community crime prevention, if eight, you're asking for. That this year ago.
A thousand each, thousand each, right?
No, that's a pretty good one.
No. And this is the first, it looks like the first year.
Apparently those stickers, expensive.
Apparently?
I said, I didn't put that in mind. I'll, I'll, I'll make it. I'll figure out where I'll get some of those.
How would be the right side?
Yeah, well, you know, they take them, stickers come specifically to the precinct. There's, hers is like her badge, hers is like her badge, the precinct coming. Then the other day, I used some of her stickers and went down. And then, yeah, that's it. The vest is the main thing. I mean.
And where is that?
Yeah, where is it? The new cars are great. They look good and. And I can get around town now.
Well, I can tell you that I've seen Constable Estrada and Constable Jackson at some of our high schools and I got some comments from our school board members. That they were there and were there greeting the kids. And so normally they want pictures with our school board members, but they wanted pictures with our new constables. So I was very interested. Okay, so what do you think? Uh, the education travel. Everyone has two, two thousand. They said, they said four. Oh, everyone has one thousand.
They're the two that are one. I'm good at a thousand.
And you, and you two just want some additional training?
Yes. Well, I have the new constable school coming up also. This is a community year in two thousand seventeen. A lot of everything else has changed. That's not including what I'm doing also with my peace officer classes. That's compound on my, that's not what I'm asking for. But the majority of that two thousand will be for this position.
And so when, when did you take office?
October last year.
And what day, what, what month?
September eighteenth.
September, yes. So you didn't have time to do new constable school then?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why you have to go this year, okay.
It comes the, the following March after every election.
I remember that.
On sale.
On sale.
Sales.
For a week. And it's gotten to where pretty much if they can build these schools now, they're not being like they used to. You're having to use your. Like I said, they need more training. They're still working towards their master peace officer or I'm not. I know that state's talking about making constables now have to go. Before it was just the deputies had to go to the twenty hour required civil school. They're talking about this too for everybody that's a constable, all constables that are deputy students.
And that's the training that I attend every year. I go to the twenty hour civil part. And like I said, the law's different with civil constable change.
How many hours do you have to have? Of what, what is required is forty hours.
Forty hours. And we get that in our continuing education for constables, kind of like chiefs of police and sheriff. Goes, that's a forty hour call. She always takes extra and then I kind of, when she comes back, I get her stuff and we go over.
So if we don't increase this this year, will we communicate back up to a thousand next year?
Well, uh, if we look at it next year, we sure can.
Well, I think, I mean, we need to be mindful that they have the lowest travel budget of any elected official in this county. And they are active constables, at least have been in the last couple of years that I've seen. I think several of us have seen in the community, so. I, I would support this. It's very small dollar amount in terms of elected officials.
And, and then on the, as far as the vest, I think I've lowered my vehicle budget some to help try and counteract that vest. We got new cars. I don't think we'll want to be using the gas prices. Of course, you know, gas prices, you know, some of those are gonna go back to three dollars or something down. I, it's pretty important that the training is always. As a police officer myself, I think training is very important. And I think probably, you know, just from visiting with other constables and deputy constables, I think the four of us are probably as. Well-trained constables in the state of Texas is almost you can get. I mean, you have like the years' experience all of us have. Because you got constables elsewhere that's not getting training that they really should be having.
We are very blessed.
Yes.
Especially when I just returned from Austin for that twenty hour civil processing school. And I can sit here before y'all and stand here and say, these constables have great training. That when they took me under their wing, I was already there like, oh, then, you know, we're doing this right. So I learned a little and brought it back and we're, you know, we'll get together and share what we know and stuff like that. So that twenty hour really helps now. What we're hearing like Constable Jackson saying is gonna be mandated here pretty soon. So it's kind of a.
And we're constantly trying to improve our offices. You know, there's a few things that we're not really at speed on yet that the sheriff's office still, we're slowly now starting to take that off the sheriff's office if we can. At least coming out of our courts as far as what we live execution stuff, we're learning that because it's very complicated. We're hopefully gonna be there when we take that plate from the sheriff's office and take the load off of themself.
Well, just to break it off, I think we have good stuff to offer. And your revenue's up and everything's like, we appreciate our payment data accounting.
Yeah, unfortunately, people aren't paying rent because we're.
What about you, Mike? You think you want to say?
My only comment was, my advice is basically flat. All I did was just move things around with various columns. Can more realistically reflect where the money is spent.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you guys. Okay, so I'm okay with the vest now. Yeah, I was obviously wrong there, but.
We need to thank you for all the constables.
Just two questions. All right, Sheriff, do you want to talk about the cameras?
Put two pieces of, they took their own exercise. One, everybody, the top one is the one from the grant. From the state. And it just lists out our budget there and then it says the budget summary there. It has no real total there. The cash amount is fourteen, six, sixty-two. That's our cost for the body cameras, which is a twenty-five percent. The second page that you did is a quote that we actually got from Jesus. If you'll look up at the top part of that, the fifty-six, six, uh, fifty-six, six, twenty-nine is for the total of all of our body cameras, our storage and everything else like that. And we may actually drop that, you know, this license for administration from eight to five, so I'll drop it down a bit too. With the twenty-five percent match of that is for that fourteen. The bottom part of that is the cameras for the cars. And that total is fourteen, five, oh, five. These are offers of deal where they will give you, if you go with both, they'll give you the body cameras for free, which is that eleven thousand dollars. But since we want a grant, we still have to pay for those. So what they've offered us is there at the bottom, the discount each, for each year is almost three thousand dollars. Their discount.
So thirty-six thousand next year, should this pass through budget, is what we would be expecting for the maintenance costs?
Yes.
And contractually, is there, a lot of times that after this four years, there's a five percent increase or do we know what percentage is?
And I didn't know that on the cameras, they'll replace those every two.
And Sheriff, are you gonna have any accounts to help offset that maintenance or that's just gonna go into the general?
Yes, you know, it's one of those things that do we really want them to deal. The way the pulse of the nation is, I think, they're always. And we all have tumors. I don't know. It's kind of died down a little bit over the last couple of months, but there for a while, I thought it was gonna be a lead thing anyway.
I think it's very expected that the legislature will ultimately report. The initiation grant program this year, the, the pulse of the legislature indicates that that's a lead into a mandate.
So it would be, that'd be a two.
We did.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
I know we talked a little bit about the radio yesterday. Carrie actually spoke to the cell and got an email back from someone like her. She did just follow up with that. Because I know that's a huge expense, but so how, to me, it's a hard period.
I have a promotion going right on right now where if you sign a lease purchase agreement, you can get two years with no payment and no interest. But the contract has to be signed by September twentieth. And there is no penalty for early payoff. So if you wanted to sign a lease agreement by September twentieth, you wouldn't have to make a payment until September twenty-eighteenth. And with one of tomorrow's funds, that twenty-twelve on issue would be paid off.
And the price tag hasn't changed still? Six and a half million?
Well, that's the other part of this that I read in the two is that, yes, our quote was six. The promotion is only due for less than five million, but he has, he has talked to, he has super officers. They're willing to maybe dream to allow that. Price. That people know the price is a six point five. So we can buy into that fact. It'll still cost us the six point five, but the way the promotion is written is it's for any project worth than five million, but they're not allowed to see the way they're improving for that even though it's a six point five.
And not only wants paying six thousand something thousand towards that.
They'll pay the ten percent.
And then we'll have maintenance to go with that as well, since that's up there.
Somewhere along there. And again, the, the big thing too is the tower.
And that's the only thing, Judge, we have to decide during this budget cycle. I mean, I know that September twentieth, if I heard correctly, I mean, I still would advocate for a conversation with the city where we sign something. If Randall and the city and Potter are all doing this.
I think the city is somewhat open to that. Well, there's a couple of councilmen that I think this is interesting.
What is the city's cost for this project? Grand County, you have any idea what their cost is?
It's gotta be. The last I heard was not seven point five for Randall.
So they would, they would be eligible for this unless they had another exception. So this might be a moot point if. If cities is up, you know, eight point five or whatever, they may not be eligible for what we just discussed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm suspecting that the city is gonna be a lot higher because they are doing all of the.
Well, and even for our cost share, we could do the, we could do our part with it. I mean, wherever we land on the agreement, I'm assuming ours would still be fairly close. Let's just say it's five million for the sake of discussion. I, I would imagine we could still take advantage of something like this because we're still gonna have to pay our share of it.
Yeah, like I said, the only, the only drawback is happens if they actually go with. Just from what I learned last year. But that would be more.
We never do wish. Okay, our rescue. Right, center. So I'm not setting this. I have cuts.
Yeah, I'm not clear on what all of it is.
Well, I cut the, Carrie didn't make it because of our management. One thing we let, let you have actually was the free one. And the only reason we didn't let you have the command unit right now is because we want you to have.
We are up three here.
So you can call it helping that else. What's the lot? One lot?
I'm on, I'm following you right now. The air cylinders. That's the. Yeah, we have all these cylinders, all my grand, they're all bought at one time. We have these four up. And what I'm trying to do is replace. Half of this year, half of next. I try to put it on a ten-year rotation, but we definitely have to fund the four of us. So we're on a, we're on a two-year replacement down because they will expire before our next budget cycle. So we're gonna be down half of by this time next year anyway. So we're trying to replace half of now, half of next year.
Are you talking about those two points?
Yeah, those free.
We, we can touch the extrication in it, yeah.
And talking to Carrie about it a little bit, the, the cylinders themselves are less than a thousand dollars a piece. So rather than invent that in capital item, my, my recommendation is we just put sixty-five in the non-capital equipment. And then we can take care of it out and out.
Stationery and supplies, or, yeah, it went up to eleven thousand?
I still have requests at eighty-two hundred.
Requested eighty-two hundred?
Have a known refrigerator that we need it for internet for your stations that the increase in student internet, did that maybe come up?
The, I believe that came down under M D T expense. Seven, four, eight, four, zero. We added that in because we will start that air card expense this next year because the computer fall on the crane. So that will start coming out this year. That was the, where we added. So we have internet in our other stations. That, that was added stationary.
So we'll refer to yours too, so.
Yeah, me too.
So the ten thousand five fifty-nine in M D T expense adds a grant that you guys got?
Eighteen, ten thousand five fifty-nine. Yeah, I'm not sure how that was accounted for, but we do, we have fourteen thousand something this year that'll have to be paid for the air card expenses.
And that is for internet at all the stations? Is that what the air cards is?
I don't believe so. The air cards are for the computers, the air card computers, correct?
Yes. We have the air cards that are under the M D T expense.
Okay.
And then the, when we, uh, we were going with Clearwire. Years before they went out of business a year ago. And I T was paying for that. It's going to the internet in my stations that are not connected back to the county. And so Jason said what we need to do is go with the Verizon. MiFi's, the little spot, hotspots, and Carrie said that those need to go under stationery.
So is the, so the M D expense, the thirteen thousand?
That is for our trucks.
So you're just on your trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
And the air car does what for the trucks? Is that the GPS?
Transfers our GPS location back to the sheriff's office, gives us the information from the sheriff's office. That's the primary use for it. It allows us to do reports in the trucks. It allows us to communicate between trucks.
And you originally purchased that off the grant?
Yes.
And this is the first year that we're paying for it now after the grant? Was that grant just a couple of years ago?
Yes. They were finished up last summer.
Was the grant to just purchase the actual air cards? Is that what it was?
The grant was to purchase all of the computers, the rocket units that are in the trucks, all the software to go to Spillman. All of that was on that grant.
We're gonna be up to ten, which is a fee.
Yes. And we came, before we, normally a lot of the grants, we have permission to accept a grant because we know we have matching funds. The air card expense is something we came back and talked about before we accepted that grant.
And then the stationery and supplies that went up to eleven thousand, that is for the internet?
That, that increase was gonna happen for us once, the hotspots.
And why do you need those all? But you don't have them today, right?
No, we don't. We're gonna have to have internet in all of the stations. We're putting firearms in the stations. They have to have internet connection. And we have, most of our stations, they have no way to do any reporting or anything from their stations. So we're gonna be kind of bringing them up to date a little bit. Did you all have fire reports to there? Other things that they need to do?
And the firearm that you guys are putting in there, or is it like a fire detection, not a suppression system?
Correct. We can afford suppression. That's not gonna happen. So we have basically what they are is spotting fire detection systems that will alert to you, I believe, the sheriff's department. And it has to have an internet connection to be able to do that.
And Jason, you suggested like a mobile, like a mobile device, a hotspot type of thing for their connections? That would you?
Right. Previously, they had Clearwire, modem's out at, at all the stations. Clearwire went out of business. The Austin County Clearwire was about forty, fifty bucks a month, if I remember right. And Verizon has little hotspots that are about the same price, about forty bucks a month unlimited. And that was the best option for it. These guys, no construction costs, no other business.
And does that happen, is there security around those devices or anything going into our network? Any devices going into that? I just see that mentally as just a raw device and whatever, anybody searching online?
They don't have any access. The stations like that have no access back into the county network.
Right. And if you're standing alone offices, all they're doing is using the, the hotspots just for internet access. There, there's no connection back to our data center.
If they're accessing back, they'll go back to the trucks. And through the trucks, we use NetMotion to access back into the sheriff's office and into the network.
I'm just trying to be mindful, you know, these are certainly taxpayer expenses. And we have currently, on anything on the network, there's a lot of security pieces in there. We implemented several of those a couple of years ago even. In terms of just online searching and the vulnerability of online searching and what happens in that environment. So I wouldn't negate the need for that. And certainly, you know, the fire detection is an important piece of it. But how do we make sure that we have some safeguards in place that no one is abusing that? How do we, how do we do that?
That's what Jason does.
No, Jason's saying it's a raw device.
He's one of which has word protected. I mean, nobody other than our members can get it good. It's just the security of, we trust our members.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I don't. I'm just trying that it's.
Oh, you're trying to say that, what if the members do something?
Yeah, or anyone that gets into.
We have policies in place that do anything, fire. I mean, it's pretty easy to get fired from a volunteer fire department.
I just think you know how about cheap, that's all. I mean, it's, it's the reality and it's often unfortunately from the page of the news and it goes back to.
We have policies that cover, uh, social media, posting stuff on Facebook. We have rules about taking pictures. We have rules about tweeting, twittering, whatever it is they do. And we don't tolerate very much of it. So we haven't had any issues with that at the station. I don't foresee that being a, a big issue, but if it becomes one, we will investigate it and find out.
I think we're gonna stay on top of it.
Yeah, I just don't know how you would know, is my only question. If it's just a raw device, that's my only question. You would know.
I would know. The, the best thing I can tell you about computers, I know how to yell out. It doesn't necessarily make them work any better, but I can yell out when we have to do something else with my call, the incidents have got us.
That's what you yell at your.
All the systems, all the system.
We have no control over those. They're just. Raw devices. Even if you called Jason, I would imagine Jason could do anything. It's just a standalone device with no security layers that we put on anything filtering through the county.
Right. And, and the way that we keep the county protections, these, the computers that are out of these voluntary fire stations, they're not connected back to any of our network or anything like them. These are, they're on little islands that are out there. What, what are the options with their meat?
Tin can.
Uh, there, a couple of options. There, there, it's gonna be expensive. Uh, you know, there's gonna be caught in tens of thousands of dollars for each one of these stations to put them on our network. To actually have, you know, filter through our internet and all that sort of thing. I mean, it's gonna involve either cable in the ground connecting them or something in wireless in the air. It's gonna be a.
Still don't guarantee it can't be interrupted either.
Okay, do you have anything else?
The travel, travel, okay?
Travel.
That good.
Travel, okay?
So what does, the stationery supplies, it'll back to eleven thousand or? Yeah, I believe so. Sorry, that I didn't do my. Carrie wanted that to come out, all of those Wi-Fi, those Wi-Fi's in the stations, they're gonna set about the M D T. This is the.
So your education travel is forty-five thousand?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm sorry, I was a little, I was a little sorry.
I'll take four.
I didn't say four or just support. What do you go on up to thousand on your, on the education materials?
Yeah. We, uh, we have been working with Renn County to do, uh, emergency medical training, is the easiest way to put it. And in doing that, the class is free, but we pay for all the books and materials for the, for the guys to go. So it seems like a pretty good deal.
And then you have a new line item for medical services for five thousand and five minutes.
Yeah, we can take, we can take that away. What it is, and if you require that firefighters, whether they're paid or volunteer, have to have physicals every two years. I've been trying for a long time to start a program, but if you can imagine what it's gonna be like trying to get seven, five guy to, to get a physical every year, two, you know, five thousand dollars is a good deal. So I say we postpone the program until next year and we'll look at it again next year.
Is that, is that a state requirement, Chief?
It isn't right now. It's a N F P A requirement and my fear is they were gonna see it coming when, uh, when I go to most of the stuff that I've been talking about. The main thing right now is, uh, the cancer rate among mainly firefighters. And, uh, they're calling to have a lot more, uh, station design features, a lot more cleaning features. And, uh, medical monitoring is, is the big pose right now. That they're really pushing to have some kind of law put in place that needs to be done. But it's not right now. I wanna try to start the program, but I, I think it's gonna take more planning and force and more input than, than just putting some money in there trying to do it.
Do you think now's the time to maybe start saving a little on it, like twenty-five hundred as opposed to five thousand? So that when it does come to the commissioner's court, it's not so big of a hit, especially if you don't feel five thousand is gonna really address the need?
I don't know. You know, it's every year, we kind of start back at zero, so I don't know. I, I think, I think what we need to do is probably, uh, talk to some, uh, medical professionals and try to see if we can get something in place. Kind of have an idea as to what it's gonna cost and then see if we can phase it in. I don't think we're gonna be able to, to go and dive it into place because it's gonna, it's gonna take a pretty, pretty huge hit to try to just start it from scratch.
And a lot of Tawston is just gonna be repetition. It's gonna be every year or whatever the requirements they actually come out with with the medical monitoring. It's just going to whichever spot it is, it's just gonna be money every year.
Anything else?
The only thing I'd like to say is that, um, I think it's time again, maybe looking at off-year election. Off-year, like exactly. Funding that we tried and go on for the sales tax, uh, and incorporate. But there, there is a way to try and get some more money. I think we, we need to look at that again. But it's gonna take a, a large effort to do this one. Long to do.
I'm more bored with that. Okay. Anything else, guys? Thanks. Thanks. Is there anything we can talk about in C S P? Um, their capital request. I'm on forty-two hundred yet. Oh, it's, it's been, has it been? Well, on my printout, I have a capital of fifty-five hundred and now I'm capital of five thousand. Capital's actually, it's in the, it's capital, it's still in there. And that's for what?
Security.
James? And then the office furniture? Isn't that what they budget every year as well?
It is.
Have they used any of that this year?
Just remember, we take it out. There's not a need, we have the legal stuff.
Okay, so, hold a second.
Right, so that we do that to an operation or separate?
The eleven for the, oh, give them that. All of those judges count. Judges count you out. Ten thirty. I never got an email from them. On Tuesday. It's open. It's an open meeting.
That's statutory. Membership would you, where statute? No, it, like I said, it's, it's set by statute that it's the judges.
Okay, sure. You can attend and participate in public comment. I've done that before.
Okay, so, next is gonna help. We got, I can all meet in person today. This is my, is this my person? That name was changed, I'm sorry.
Mental health fees, ten, ten thousand, fifteen thousand.
That's for the, for the, uh, Thomas. That's, that's what we actually have to pay for the families, uh, who we have patients in the, in the county.
Here's, is it state?
We, the other counties will let us in.
When a, when a patient, when we send a patient to the state hospital and they determine that the patient needs to be held longer, up to twelve months, then a separate hearing is required to get paid, which taught Ken most of the time.
We pay someone.
The state hospital we sent to is, um, if they pay the expenses that proceed.
And then the increase over the last couple of years, judges add an increase in this case volume?
I'm su- I'm sure it is. I didn't even know this was a specific one. I, I never did know that. I thought it was just in my budget. Um, yeah, we've had a huge increase, huge increase in, in cases. I mean, hundreds of more since twenty thirteen.
And has there fees, i- in particular Wichita County, I mean, if we're, are there fees increased and all, or is it a statutory fee that's set?
There's, there, there are, um, if memory serves me correctly, there are certain fees that are statutorily prescribed, but, uh, which would include like court costs, things like that. But there are add-on fees that are also permissible. For instance, if the county judge or whatever judge is hearing, it, they're travels to the state hospital rather than having the hearing at the courthouse. There are a lot of fee for that. There's a fee for the prosecutor, uh, who represents the state. Of course, there's also a court-appointed attorney fee, uh, and, and whether those have come on up. And my guess would be the increases in fees would relate to the court-appointed attorney fees and, uh, the discretionary fees they're adding on. Court costs are statutorily set.
For this line item, mental health fees are what we're paying on that.
Um, that is, I just thought said, the, the court costs and attorney fees are what I, judges bring in and invoice, I can see exactly what it is we're paying on. We have court fees, liability compensation. State ID, security fee, records management, U C L S, indigence, lagerary, basically regular court costs that we're doing. You know, sheriff fees, district attorney fee, judges fee, ad liability, you know, there's the list.
No commissioner fees?
No. And, and this particular case was, I think it was seventy-six dollars for that, that long person.
Okay, thank you. Family crime, I need to talk about that.
I think that I have to keep it low, even though we're not seeing an increase in crime and extortion. Indeed, I, while it's not gonna affect the budget, I would reasonably request perhaps or reasonably anticipate, I would say, perhaps an uptick in the bottom of the crime cases, both involving family violence prosecution as well as C T S in light of Chief Drains' creation of a specialized domestic violence unit within, uh, the general police department, which of course is our primary source of case presentation.
Unfortunately, we could have to, okay. Um, Kerry, I did notice an increase on that one. I'm sorry, I felt the fifty-three thirty on the salary assistance. Did I catch that wrong? What is that for?
We actually have, um, one person, I believe, that's split between the county attorney's office and the, this, um, it, um, and it's, it should be offset in the county attorney's office.
Okay.
All right, new bakery systems for the ball program. This is for the D A. Is our D A in here this morning? Or is he talked about? He's resting.
It looks like it's all the same.
Hey, we can get it about, we can get two thousand dollars from the state. Look rich. Good morning.
Good morning.
Calm down, bro.
I put it in my ringtone. I guess we can start the rolling here.
Okay.
From what I understand, we did five hundred and one thousand.
What did you all net, Kerry?
What's the six forty?
Is that five thirty-four?
Yes, let's see where we are here today.
And that's just, uh, the majority of that's gonna go to the bleach because, uh, we use, uh, uh, more than I anticipated at the fire station. But I just wanted to replenish my stock. And it is very expensive. And we have, uh, um, upcoming roads like Riker and, and some other projects. And we use bleach for, uh, culverts and everything else. That's why I asked for, um, just to maintain the road.
Kerry, did you give reverse anything for the?
Um, I spoke to my kids. You said that they had something left over in their budget. Do they even try to give us some of the bleach back? Like they're down, I think it's like that. I don't can't get. I guess we won't come to them completely or briefly. How much we need to have of the bleach?
So we took it down to five forties, that right, Kerry? They don't want to use two hundred thousand so far?
Yeah.
But you, but you, but you foresee an increase in using that for the?
Yes, because we're so far behind in, in all these other projects we had. We still have to get into steel coating. And that's a majority of my cost. We're just now starting to get, um.
Well, I would suggest at least leave it where it is, today's budget, at five sixty. And then certainly we have contingency and we'll know more, you know, this time next year after you take those roads kind of under your umbrella. I think we're, we're planning certainly for worst case scenario, but maybe, you know, we've got a little fund out there that we can make something happen if something changes that you're not expecting. At least the current budget of five sixty.
Because there's a window of opportunity to come back and pay. Necessary.
So, okay, it's five sixty.
Two minutes by station, but it's five.
Yeah, but the current budget is five sixty, so I was suggesting and just at least bump it back to his current budget based on what he said as opposed to the six forty that was requested.
What do you think, Chris? Yeah.
Do you have an increase in tires, just a little bit?
Yes, um, we've been running those trucks pretty hard. Each truck tire alone is five hundred dollars. A motor truck is eight hundred, a tractor is eight hundred dollars. And then we pop a tire on the load, it's twelve hundred dollars, so it goes real quick. And there's eight, eight tires on the motor truck. If they get wore out, we have to replace them all. We're looking at about four thousand dollars.
What is this equipment rental and maintenance? We have a seven, six, six, one.
That's, uh, we use that for the roller. We, we ran a roller here the last five or six years I've been. And, uh, it's twenty-six hundred dollars a month. But we have to pick it up in February because if we don't figure it out in February, we won't have to sort of, so. So if we get the new roller, we can eliminate that a little bit and drop it down. But that's, the majority, I had to transfer, I had to make a budget to, uh, cover the cost of the roller because we were just a little bit short there because we're so far behind in the city. So, uh, yeah, that's twenty-six hundred dollars a month. We would have paid for that, but, and, and I did ask for it and, uh, we took down the full cost of it to a hundred and five thousand, which it won't be that much with the train in. And then the bottom order again, it's, it's gonna be a lot cheaper. The one we're gonna replace is the two thousand and two handle. And I think we've seen a better day.
Okay, Kerry, I forgot. We, I know we, we, we deleted the grader, Rob. Right. And we reduced the, the cost on the others because they didn't put the, the retail price. Okay. So he's getting, he's getting the roller and not the grader? Especially we have that cost at seventy-nine thousand two ninety-one.
And that's without the train. They're gonna give us at least, you know, twenty, thirty thousand. We can't say how much for sure for our own, so that'll happen.
So what do you think the total is gonna be on the roller and amount? Box.
Just guessing, probably fifteen, sixteen, about, soon.
We just did.
We just did, bro.
Yeah. You did, Rob. Okay. So no grader, okay? What about the, uh, the loader?
Just that loader. Is that what, the front end loader? It's a nineteen ninety-six. Um, we basically just use it there at the farm, the little truck because it's so warm. Matter of fact, that's the one thing that we got. It, I got hurt on it because it didn't have an override suspension and it falls to this in the back. And it's been around for a long time. But that's basically all we use it for, there at the farm, the loader. We don't take it on the road to job site. We have a John Deere. We have a John Deere that we use out on the job site. And we use it for some other, like I said, that one, we won't, we won't take it anywhere even unless we have to.
Could you do without a new one?
Uh, well, are you willing to give me something else? Let's negotiate.
No, what do you want?
Well, yeah, we could probably do without it. I know that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the trade-in, I don't know what they traded on that. I'm not sure, but, yeah, we could probably do without it. We have a backhoe that we use sometimes. And we have a John Deere and a Cat, but we have three of them. Yeah, we could probably do without it. Eventually, it's been, it'll change your place.
Okay, what about a pickup or SUV? Is this replacing something that actually isn't?
Yeah, we're, what we do is we shuffle the vehicles around. And we're going to replace the two thousand and five pickup at a hundred twenty-three thousand, a hundred twenty thousand on one. And we usually just get a new one and shuffle it around and throw that one out to another option. Pick up an S U V? Pick, pick a body SUV? Uh, I'd like to get an SUV. That way, whenever I'm done with it, I can bring it down to the road crew to rehab and then it's going to be now a car. And then use it to transport, to guide it back. What we do is try to get the most stock back there. And then we hand it down, shuffle it around until the load is being at the bottom. When the music stops, we let it move.
So Carrie, who's on there that's cut? It's, the request is forty-two and then your ten-five cut. What, what is that?
Thirty-one five is the quote that we're just in, we're just in the bottom four lane that's for pickup, consulting, this pickup for thirty-one five would have been closer to action cost, but if you go with an S U V, it will be twenty-two, twenty-two.
So what's in there now is the pickup?
Which ones are going to last, you know? I think the top one, that one. And we won't get more use of it because like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll just start using it for transport vehicles. That's all, transport the guys to and from the job site because we leave the equipment all over the county.
So you're going to forty-two thousand then?
Yes, yes.
Is that good enough trade for you?
That, that would have been. I don't want us to forget to, to, you know, I agree, we need to do some things, I'm sure, but let's not forget about this motor grader in the future because sixteen years of age is, that's the average age. Oh, yeah. That's the oldest one we have, the yard, you know? We use it quite a bit. And you're using personal removal and then it puts a weird amount of usage in these things, so.
So you want us to build a window?
Yeah, the windows, when we put in, we didn't anticipate it being that high because they tried to match it with the ones that are there and they're old, so it costs a lot more than I think. And we're still trying to get somebody to come out and just get some basic wind that will not leak. The other thing, for some reason, we're having a hard time with it. I figured if we had some money in there, we'll try to get somebody to do it.
What's the line item that's on, Carrie?
Oh, we do have to tear down that, well, we don't have to tear down the, might put it in this budget to remove that old barn in the bottom of the hill, the asbestos and whatever we have. And then we have to pay for, to move the utilities and all that other stuff that are attached to that building.
Would you just get the old orders back?
Well, we can tear it down, we're going to tear it down. And our gas pumps are attached to that, so now that we're going to go to the cars, I don't know how that's, we might be able to remove all that instead of moving that. So we're just going to put it there.
So that line item, the fifty-nine thousand, Carrie, includes both of these, the windows and the demolition of the old barn?
No, it just increases.
Just the window plus. And that's fine, Sebastian?
Yes.
Um, Carrie, on seven, six, oh, five, oh, the one twenty-five to one fifty? And Sebastian, you may have mentioned this, and so I was trying to follow on each one of these accounts, one twenty-five to one fifty? Couple of years ago, this account was actually seventy-four thousand. We, we understand what falls in that.
It's just the old vehicles, like I said, the loader and stuff like that and stuff. You know, whenever you work, we've been working pretty hard this summer on all kinds of projects and things are breaking. And you're not learning, you're probably not going to break anything. But we are learning those vehicles. And that affects us pretty hard as stuff starts breaking. The skid load broke a few times, our pro patch broke a few times. And our pro patch, we had to send it off because we're going to work on it here in town. So we had to send it to Kansas City. And then transmission, like our brooms are real old, we just had an issue that did it and we had to rebuild one of the motors. And it's, it's just stuff like that that costs a lot.
And so I'm just concerned because it's doubled almost in terms of, in, in three years. What, what are, what is our actual spend on that, on that?
Today, we have about a hundred and forty.
Spend?
The order of equipment gets harder as the face. But it is good equipment, we still got, we can still clear it out.
And then the mandated compliance dot is how it's referred to here? You want me to explain that?
That's the mandatory drug testing for textile. They're making us, everybody that has a CDL, now they're going to random drug test us, which we shouldn't have been doing a while back, I believe, but we just, we were just made aware of it, but they're going to make us randomly drug test everybody. If you have a CDL, you have to be drug tested randomly. So that's why we're asking for more money. Uh, I think it's, if I'm correct, Carrie, it's every three months or something like that, drug testing for the.
I'm, I'm not sure what the interval is, that sounds correct. It's a, you know, chief department.
They pick a certain percentage of how many of you have CDLs. You can draw names out of a hat and they're going to put them there and drug test.
Sure, do you guys contract out for that? I know on your new hire expenses, I see those kind of names for like drug testing. Do you just contract out for that?
We just switched to, you want to care?
Care today.
Care today. Yeah, we sit long. They drug test kind of beginning. I don't want to have this random drug testing going to continue because we barely finish the paperwork on it.
And that's expensed per department like that, Carrie? Okay. And you think three thousand?
Uh, yeah, we kind of tried to figure it out. The ballpark figure, that's about what we came up with.
Okay.
Because we need to do the seasonal.
Carrie, can we scroll up just to the top? There might have been one more thing that come up, but I'm just going to. Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good, what we've done so far?
It was cut in little, also got one of the, um, it was one point three.
What have we spent on this account today?
I expect to make a mention again.
I don't know how that's going to work, we go to the credit card either. I'm, I think it's going to work out better, I don't know.
I'll think you will.
Yeah. The gas prices, only thing you never know. We can run another people a lot.
I'm sorry. Seven. It's pretty close, we have a ninety-three, maybe even to, maybe to a hundred or one ten. I mean, that's pretty close. Because the goal is not to, you know, set you up for failure. I mean, we just want to be pretty close.
So you want to take it to about one ten then? So is that okay?
Yeah. And you're, you're cutting the number of employees?
Yes.
That was going to be a grand old party for me because you did a good job yesterday.
Yeah, we didn't hear you. You didn't hear him.
You were talking about giving up your seasonal work. Yeah, if we could at least get one new employee, we could give up the two seasonal maintenance techs because it's just hard to find somebody with CDLs that's reliable and dependable because the whole point is they're seasonal and there are people that don't have to work time jobs. It's real hard to find people. Uh, we already had, we had three guys that lived here in town, they moved the border, their mowers, well, then one of them found a job at the worker and he's there to cover the town, so now we're down to one or two more. So we're, we're depleted at the seasonal position, so if we could, I would mind getting rid of the two maintenance tech positions for our four.
What's the difference in cost?
What line item?
Four hundred and sixty-sixty.
That's one, twenty-six thousand, well, this year is what it's going to be for the two maintenance checks together. I'm starting up during three, 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 four, a year plus. Hold on there. She, she gave us, she just got six seasonal. What can you do? Yeah, uh, four mowers. There's five mowers and two maintenance techs. And it's hard, I don't know if we've ever kept those positions all summer. It's just hard to keep somebody. And it's more time consuming to interview. Usually if they got a pulse and they can walk in, they're on her. It's just, it's just hard to keep somebody. Just, just a thought to throw out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't understand what I'm after. We need to cut the weather.
Carrie, did we want to go through the special funds? Do you think now is the time to do that? I don't know if that will have much effect in this.
It won't affect us at all. We can be approved, but it, it won't help with this.
So that would be, uh, that would have been the attachment that Carrie had provided within your original book. And my, my worksheet, the first one says page one oh one.
Special work tax or nothing?
What is it? What is the interest on investments? That's the interest in line item.
Actually, anything invested revenue, since they have their own specific revenue. I have the, you know, things like the tax or, but anything that is going to be a revenue.
All right, okay, the opposite, okay. And then who uses this education? Oh, no, I'm sorry, education, travel, this day to degree and supplies.
This is the one that is specifically under tax assessment. She has consulted that, and that's where she would find the information.
The non-capital question?
Yes.
So this is what we're doing in home city.
We still pay sixty-six thousand for books?
One month subscriptions, this is just a lot, yes.
Which dropped dramatically from a couple of years ago.
Has anyone heard, has anyone heard anything?
I haven't heard anything, no comments out.
But we all operate to save.
The library? I'll add that to our strategic planning list and items. Just to, it'd be good to know, we can follow up, yeah. Feedback on the, on the decision.
Courthouse security? This is for the seven, seven security. Yeah, including the.
There's an increase in salaries in there?
Yes, that's true. Lots of, the associate judge, imagine everything that would be said. Our security.
And then equipment for six thousand there?
Yes, there's not anything specific that they would just, they would just in case that we should have left like one or.
Okay. And cell phone allowance? There's a cell phone allowance? All people just don't work. So what about the building repair and maintenance account, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars?
Carrie, we just put that in there in case they need, like borrowing, they moved to the.
Georgia. So is this, is a new request on the cell phone allowance?
No.
It's existing.
And then JP three? What this is just as?
No, it's for the, James, the morgue, your house.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the ones that are, are not in.
And what's the non-capital equipment, what's in there, Carrie?
There, yeah, there's something specific. It's just in there, should something arise, like a little grid blast or, I can't think what else we purchased out of that.
Do we use it at all this year? And Carrie, this wouldn't have any effect on the bottom line since the, the revenues don't cover the expenses? Would this be worth us adjusting to a thousand? Since we're not using it, will it affect the bottom line that we're working towards?
This is its own, own separate mind, its own.
Could you use that? Could you use the remainder of that money to use for us? That's a big change.
The law is very specific on this time.
We're trying that, all right?
I'm trying. Okay, then, uh, next one? Rivers Management Fund, two, three, five, and Julie's.
Yes.
Anything there?
Julie, in yesterday's discussion, you said that you felt like you could get thirty thousand, that that's going to be in addition to the forty-eight here. Correct. Because I think this is really important.
Yes, because I look back at that email that Jen sent me, I asked you a while back, just as long, because I still feel like that, because I put records management fund on our official public records and our court records, I really feel like what I'm spending on, court stuff needs to come from the court side that we collect. So, but I have enough in there. Okay. Next one is election fund. And that was really cool. She's put four hundred and fifty thousand in. Any questions on that?
Um, office room?
Office room? I think this is from back several years ago, we had that space, I believe it was like every dollar planes. And I don't know that we had to take that, it's just in there just in case.
And it's marked on the performance contingencies, so.
Okay, then mowers registration, reverse fund, number two, thirty-seven.
Same as strictly reverse, the same tweet, the one shade stuff, and say reverse is.
Record Management Fund. Is there any change in this, or?
A little bit of an increase on the salaries.
I don't think we're going to request, but we put the actual budget together.
Okay. We've already talked about this one.
And then just as for technology fund, as for all the JPs, as for all the stuff, right? It's for iPads and all.
The technology.
And Carrie, is this account, is this accounted on this particular budget that would back to offset the JP package on the IT maintenance?
Technology fund, is that? This is for Carolina. Then the check fund. Yeah, one and four that is paying, since our salaries pay nothing to check.
And again, the salaries have been removed and. Information and investigation, got it, ten thousand.
That would be.
Just a jump from one to ten, my eye.
I've used it in a lot of years.
I think we just keep it back in case we have a complicated case, suppose fraud, that investigation might have caused expense that might have been bad, but I think we just keep that in reserve. We'll talk about some of those other special ones that cover that.
And then the county forfeiture fund? Anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, it's a variable. You hear how much we're affordable, so we have a forfeiture in the works right now.
So the aid lenders, you can actually, you have to sell that?
We can, we also pursue when we can, FBI, federal agencies, often we forfeit through federal forfeiture procedure, where we actually are able to forfeit greater amounts than under state law. So, in a federal case, we can give for the bank accounts and things like that, that creates an issue, so. And it works, you know, there's a good book, well, the feds are able to hit people where maybe they couldn't, strictly federal case stick, but by and where Texas can, there's a specific federal provision, that can cause interstate commerce and free people.
But Scott, if you did indeed sell those out, would the dollars go back to forfeiture account as opposed to general revenue?
It actually goes into the general fund. We've worked those cases historically, understanding that that human that pursues those cases is funded through that, through this particular fund, several investigators who have some specialized training, experience in dealing with gambling cases, that will pay out this one.
Next is the DA object fund, two sixty. I have two seventy, we passed two. Okay. Okay, DA object fund, nothing's changing there. Any questions on that?
I'm just looking at, I'm finishing looking at this two sixty-two, is that the one that's on the screen, Carrie, which one is two? You're on two sixty-two. Carrie, what's the difference between a fund two sixty-two and two sixty-six? One's a release fund and one's a forfeiture fund. What's a release fund, what's the difference for that?
They're actually both forfeiture funds, one is state, one is the two sixty-six.
So on this, since they are forfeiture funds, I'll look to Scott, I have a question, but are we allowed to ask questions on this fund at all? So I know the forfeiture funds are certainly protected.
Right, the district attorney's only obligation is to file a detailed budget, as you see in front of you. Once that's done, the invoice pretty much can be entered.
They can, okay, thank you. And that would be the same for two sixty-two and two sixty-six, both forfeiture funds.
Same thing for two seventy-one, itself, forfeiture. We've already discussed two seventy-two, the JAG grant, correct?
Are we on two seventy-three, page one twenty, that we're at? Yeah, I just, I'm just looking at it.
All right, any questions?
On three forty-five, the debt, we, the obligation two thousand twelve, this is the one that you said will be done next year. Little party, we should have a little celebration. I do too. And then, this is the new series that we're collecting this year, that's the three fifty fund. And so is this dog requirement, Carrie, and it's just lack of knowledge on my part, the eight sixty-eight, this is the amount that we expect every year for the series of this fund?
No, this is just an interest payment.
Okay.
Actually, next year, the other, our total that's on this four seventeen is two point eight billion. Next year, the twenty sixteen will go up and the twenty twelve will go down, and our total will be, I think it's two point four billion. And then when this level pays off, twenty sixteen, annual payments will be just under one point.
And as a twenty-year, is it twenty-year? Do you see any visible strategy, investment-wise, that we could, I feel like it's a presumptuous question since it's year one, but I'm just going to ask if we could pay off any of this potentially early, even downstream, that may be a year five, year seven conversation to refinance, similar to what we did to this bond, because we certainly saved quite a bit of money, the one expiring next year.
You possibly could, but our interest rates are so good, almost twenty sixteen, I don't think they will get a rate.
A better rate?
Lower.
Okay.
If I talk to our audience, the advisor earlier this week, he said, right now, issues are going for about one point nine percent, which is.
Okay.
Everybody back? Carrie, page one twenty-two, the debt project fund. Leaving the loading equipment in, in advance if we do that, but cutting out the course building, construction, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the contract services for the course building, and five hundred thousand on course building and open maintenance?
What were those dollars?
Tell me where all that is exactly before I.
That, we have just led to that every year, trying to build a balance so that when the time comes to replace that building, we don't have to borrow, so to tell like what we did on courthouse, we put money back here.
Oh, it's for not courthouse, for the course building.
Yeah, it's for the course building.
So that's a half a million we've added, just kind of year to year, so when do we get ready for that?
It's actually been a million, we have about six, you know, that's been in there now, I believe, just to save the super pockets and some of the.
You can, the effect of that, even if we ever make a move on additional course building. When was the last time we budgeted a million on that line?
Last year.
Last year. So it's already been cut to, this is the first year it's been cut to a half a million?
No, we actually have a million in there with all three accounts, to also begin contract services to begin, or construction, about a hundred thousand.
So these three cumulatively are where you're getting your million?
Okay, I know that mine's not here, but what projects does he have listed that we could look at right now, if you go to that by camera on the screen? I have, I'll go get it. Yeah, yeah, this page. I got one.
I need to get one.
You're on the committee.
Yeah, normally road and bridge, IT and facilities provide some type of debt, because certainly they're.
You got one, huh? Did you get one? You didn't get one. I got one. She's going to make this a copy. Put your over that part, correct?
Yes.
That's why I want to see how much we can cut, and then we can cut a portion of this out, see if we can get the.
Are we still on break?
Okay, so, everybody will just take a look at this with me.
Is everything in there now, Judge, or has something?
No, everything's in there, I, Carrie, we haven't cut anything.
Are the future already?
It's all in there, okay. Okay, so his priorities have changed a little bit on his list. He moved a number four, the reporting line system, to priority number one. Although we already had two. Art protection, building operation. Okay. Think we can wait on the ceiling plaster?
It's a brown.
So if we cut that, and cut the exterior window replacement, is that something that is going to be done right now?
It's been in the issue for several years.
Is it just some windows are cracked, right?
Windows are.
Are they leaking? Let's cut that one too, just to see if I don't even add up to a whole lot. Yeah, the neon sign. They have a problem with that guy, you won't come out and fix it, but it seems to be working. Yeah.
But since we've taken off the barn demolition off of your budget, would this part wouldn't be needed at ready?
You'd have to ask him.
I don't know, so I would suggest we take it out. It is a proud one.
Okay, take it out.
Good. So the only ones still on there right now are item two as an open question for Mike. Item four, which is the auditorium light system replacement at forty thousand.
He had a bad priority block, Susan Fred's gonna completely go out.
I know you are having problems with it, John. You are having a lot of working. Sheriff, do you remember that day at the meeting, Mike pointed us in about the lobby? There was some issue, you were having difficulty.
I remember, yes. Except there was a problem.
Another...
We have a problem with our detection. We need to handle it.
So on the, on the paper form of this, Carrie, he has thirty-two thousand and it says awaiting cost. I don't know if thirty-two is plugged in as a placeholder?
We're just, just now checking that, 'cause I don't really...
Wow. In my thoughts, I could ask. I didn't know. Yeah, they said it, line item five, fire protection failed. The waiting cost that was received today, projected thousand thirty-two, three oh two.
Okay. And you've got that as a priority one, too.
Okay.
It is probably, it's like, yeah. So the lot of it's in the fire from, from... So did we take the window?
Yeah, the only ones left are item two and five. Two is still in there until...
I'm worried too, I'm right here.
Yeah, two quarter back.
Okay. Must we've taken out, can you give me a couple more?
And Judge will go through his line item when he's here and see. And that's with, on the new positions that are in there, that is with Melin's increase. That is on, it's not in there?
Well, it's a...
I thought the four, I, I said inconsistency, I didn't, I didn't want to say that one. It isn't that, sorry, it is. So for new positions, you've got Melin and we've got the two chemists and the attorney and the secretary in there now.
Let's take out the two chemists. See how that goes.
Or if you take out the two chemists, Judge, then you don't need the attorney and secretary?
Yeah, we do, I'm still, okay. I don't, I don't need a chemist, we'll give you an attorney instead, that'd be good?
Better say yes.
I just think the attorney would be more beneficial to the chemists right now.
You want who?
I think the attorney would be more beneficial to you than the, than the chemists would be to, uh, strike you.
Right. Because we need somebody, we need a pair of eyes and brain to screen cases.
Right. We need to get those cases moved.
So we leave the clerk here?
Well, then say that. I just said, I just said attorney, can you, do you have him, Sheriff? Do you have somebody that can help?
Well, here, here's what's gonna wind up happening if I give the other time, then it's gonna be more cases put into the system. What I'm afraid the next competitor will be is once we file complaints, then we've got, we've got person, men, priors, all those sort of things, so we're not giving them back. She's doing about all she can do. That was the purpose, asking for the other person, the staff person plus added because our one person that takes in the cases from the police department. Just so you guys will get, in two thousand five, we're getting paper files, and average paper files, we're getting three cases. Now, we're getting videos replacing the other case, at least two of them. One of them being homicide, but I mean, not a lot, definitely twenty, about twenty-seven hundred DMAs, that's a file. We have to look at every one. And then figure out what we're gonna give to the defense lawyer and take care of that. So that's why I plan to take it on, is we're getting way more stuff and because technology's advancing more. And if they get body cams, they need those body cameras, you multiply that by at least two, so on our D M A stuff. So we have one, one homicide, one homicide, it was twenty-seven hundred, it's very, really pretty challenging. But the average, average per case will probably be three or four video, that's not happening because of... So that's what's eating that bottom half. And because in two thousand five, we didn't get all that. So, but like, for example, Haley probably needs to go to a teachers' school. So that's gonna be a three-day school in San Antonio. Except for Jason, I'm not his assistant, but not anybody else did. So there's no reason for asking for, for the staff, I said again, to do different things. So what I'll tell you is, it's my job to come and purportate what I need to do, my job, to get my peoples to what we need, and y'all can give what you feel like we can give. So if you're looking at the least of the chemists and keeping the attorney in for the end...
Yeah, because that'll be about one fifty.
It was like one fifty, less than one fifty for the total.
Yeah. The prosecutor, the package with the benefits is ninety-four thousand, and then the support staff fifty-four. Their salaries are different, but that's with benefits, so that's the dollar nothing gets planned in.
And what I can tell you is, I'll have to take drastic measures in my office, have to warn the folks in custody, give order to take care of the work we're supposed to do, those three, three days when we're probably shut down, we'll do that in the next case. And I find what I'm gonna, that's why, all I have is all I have, that sort of stuff, I'll have to be, I'll have to take everybody on, about to do it, and bring them home. I've got a plan in place with those cases, we're gonna handle ours, everything about those cases, meaning how many of those cases, especially if we should have, it's a first place, and anyone that they do or work for, they got sent, those sort of things, then I'll be, I'll be supporting those issues.
Okay, so with the attorney and staff, yeah?
If I get those two people, we make other stuff work. Been on the phone a great deal several times, called them this morning. And they're good, they're on the campus, they can do it, but I'll tell you again, I ran up the board with them in the campus. My answer is yes.
All right, we'll do that then. Can we see the number, Carrie? I can't. Carrie, this is, this number is taken out of the projects we just went through with Mike's.
Okay, here's what Nick said, is a computer monitoring system of our building temperatures and equipment that maintain our building temperatures, like chores, pumps, boilers, cooling towers, air remmers, stuff like that. The system is seventeen years old and it will not communicate with a lot of the newer replacement equipments that just chilled installed last year. Just records, Santa Fe systems are ancient and the technology...
I'll take that as a... You agree?
I will say that there's some, they have been concerned that our issue wasn't going to go out, because we had fluctuations in our office, our best, yeah.
Well, this doesn't replace the chiller, this just sounds to me like the equipment to... Yeah. Just to monitor the temperature variances.
Okay, so right now we're... That's what we need to do.
Balance? It's ridiculous. Can we get the capital list again, just to...
So am I good?
You're good. I don't know, are you good?
Well...
I don't think you're good until we're all weighed in.
Might be some elevated thinking as far as...
Well, let me ask this, am I good for two hours?
You're good for two hours.
I have somewhere else I think it'd be, if you can maybe do that. Okay. Then I'll be back.
Go back and watch.
Do the capital again, what's still in there? The, the equipment request.
Carrie, is there anything that we can take out of, from what I heard, we were talking about yesterday, that we can take out, use for some of this?
If you wanted to give us some fund balance of my INS to pay the debt, then the taxes you raised could go to the general fund. So it would be an even transfer fund balance versus general fund revenue. We should, yeah. Just raise the spread. Okay, our new effective tax rate is point six four four five oh. Y'all remember our current tax rate is point six six four oh two, so our effective tax rate went down. But because our debt service went up, the lending is available to come to the general fund is lower. So we're actually about two percent, the M and O rate is about two percent lower than it is currently, because that money has been shifted to pay the debt. Does that kind of make sense? So if, if we took, let's just say we took eight hundred thousand dollars out of our fund balance.
How much is in that INS fund balance?
About one point nine. So if we did have a healthy bank account, but that eight hundred thousand would be shifted to the general fund, and I have to run my revenue, I have to run the money, which is what we're examining. But that would kind of, that's about seven thousand in the general fund.
But we also lose that safety net of the INS fund balance, so that if we truly do have a year that we're having trouble on the debt, now that takes away that, that little, that safety net, so we have a little pull from that. If there's just, if there's a bad year and our debt payment on the twenty sixteen series is one five...
Well, why we've always done it just as an accounting practice, debt service gets paid a hundred percent regardless of the collection rate, we make sure that it gives a hundred percent, so that, that fund should never have to draw from the fund balance because we make sure that we put a hundred percent of the funds through that year in that.
Okay. What about any leftover dollars this fiscal year? Like, are we expecting any carrying over that can offset any of these equipment purchases?
We did a balance projection, probably in a month, we had about three, we just expect for about three hundred thousand dollars.
Which isn't much.
It's not much.
And did, we used to grow at a, what rate did that used to grow at?
Over a million. Now our, our expense budget matches our actual expenses better than what it...
So we're able to cover our, our debt without the taxes issue, that's basically what we're seeing.
Okay, here's what Nick said, it's a computer monitoring system of our building temperatures and equipment that maintain our building temperatures. Like chores, pumps, boilers, cooling towers, air ramers, stuff like that. The system is seventeen years old and it will not communicate with a lot of the newer replacement equipments that just chose to install last year. District Court said the base systems are ancient and the technology.
So I'll take that as a, you did. You agree? Uh, I will say that there's some, they have been concerned that our issue wasn't going well. Cause we had fluctuations in our office. Against you.
Yeah, it's all pressures.
Well, this doesn't replace the chiller, this just sounds to me like the equipment to. Yeah, just to monitor the temperature variances.
Okay, so right now we're. That's what we need to do.
Can we get the capital list again, just to.
So am I good?
You're good. I don't know, are you good?
Well.
I don't think you're good until we're all weighed in.
Might be some elevated thinking as far as.
Well, let me ask you this, am I good for two hours?
You're good for two hours.
I have somewhere else I think could be, if you can maybe do that. Okay. Then I'll be back.
Yeah.
We're a friend.
Go back and watch. Do the capital again, what's still in there? The, uh, the equipment request. Carrie, is there anything that we can take out of? The fund without the, we were talking about yesterday, that we can take out the use for some of this?
If you wanted to give your son fund balance of my INS to pay the debt, then the taxes you raised could go to the general fund. So it would be an even transfer fund balance. Versus general fund revenue. We should. Just raise the stretch. Okay, our new effective tax rate is point six four four five oh. Y'all remember our current tax rate is point six six four oh two, so our effective tax rate went down. But because our debt service went up, the lending is available to come to the general fund is lower. So we're actually about two percent, the M and O rate. Is about two percent lower than it is currently because that money has been shifted to pay the debt. Does that kind of make sense? So if, if we took, let's just say we took eight hundred thousand dollars. Out of our. About one. Oh, yeah, it's not ours, fund balance.
How much is in that INS fund balance?
About one point nine. So if we did have a healthy bank balance. But that eight hundred thousand would be shifted to the general fund. And I have to want my revenue calculated at ninety-eight percent, so what being exactly? But that would kind of be less than seven thousand in the general fund.
But we also lose that safety net of the INS fund balance. So that if we truly do have a year that we're having trouble on the debt. Now that takes away that, that little, that safety net to be able to pull from that. If there's just, if there's a bad year and our debt payment on the twenty sixteen series is one five.
Well, but why we have always done it just because of accounting practice? Debt service gets paid a hundred percent regardless of the collection rate. We make sure that it gives a hundred percent. So that, that fund should never have to draw from the fund balance because we make sure that we put a hundred percent of the funds through that year in that.
What about any, um, leftover dollars this fiscal year? Like are we expecting any carryover that can offset any of these equipment purchases?
We did a, a balance projection, probably within a month, we had about three, which is expected for about three hundred thousand dollars.
Which isn't much.
It's not much.
And did, we used to grow at a, what rate did that used to grow at?
Over a million. Um, now our, our expense budget matches our actual expenses better than what it.
So we're able to cover our. All of our debt. Without the taxes issue, that basically what we're seeing.
Yes. We don't always make sure of the debt.
I know, but. We've added it. But we're able to cover it. Without having a big tax increase.
If you wanted to take it in from the fund balance, yes, you could. But this year our debt pay was like one point nine four. And we're going up to two point eight. So if you put in eight hundred, that's when you would have basically the same debt from last year or collecting taxes.
And the caution with that, it's more of a question, Carrie, is if we look at other strategic initiatives for any of our buildings. Hence the district court that has been discussed at a high level for some time. We lose that reserve. This, this fund balance in particular. Um, what's in there? I mean, that, it, we're not, it does, we're not gonna expect, we're not expecting to increase that over the next few years. Like there's not a huge revenue or a carryover coming in, once it's gone, that's, it's gone.
Well, every year we give a little bit, any, um, delay on taxes or penalty interest that we collect on that percentage goes into that fund. And that's how we got the fund balance to begin. So every year, that fund balance does grow a little bit because of the developments in.
And it's at one five, is that what you said?
One nine.
One nine, how, how long could it take us to grow the one nine?
I'm not sure, but keep in mind, we did use five hundred thousand back in twenty twelve when we refinanced those bonds. So we have used a little bit of it recently.
But we, we wouldn't expect, I mean, in my mind, I'm trying to aggregate out when we can grow that out healthy again. And I'm envisioning ten to fifteen years to get that. But I don't know if that's a fair assessment on my part, I'm just.
How long has that fund been in play, coming here?
Well, the twenty twelve is just a little senseful, well, but then when we pay off one bond issue, the only thing that we can do is let the worries move to another debt service. Once it's in the debt service, all regardless of what debt it was on the one, it has to stay in the debt service. So it just moves. It's just getting here. The first full year, only twenty twelve. We collected almost twenty seven thousand in penalty interest. Penalty interest. So that's about what it estimated for a year.
And those three, if those three items there.
Actually, that, we just made a partial payment, if I look at the full payment, it's about forty hundred thousand a year.
And that gets like a factor this fund.
Like it, it just falls into the fund balance.
So one hundred and twenty, what was the, now we're getting twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
So didn't we agree, Judge, we're taking it from that account?
We didn't agree.
Okay, I'm asking.
That's not, that's not right.
To take it from there?
You think we should do? You? You?
I don't think we should.
Forty is forty you wanna do then? Okay, well, this is the good, this is. How much your taxes go up if we do take that one down?
Well, again, keep in mind, I was the day vote against twenty-one million dollars, that's my advocate coming in.
There's no way we'll ever. Get to a point where there's no debt.
No, that's.
There is no, there's no such thing as that, I mean, and there is good debt. When you have infrastructure you have to maintain, you're gonna have debt.
Agreed, that's not what I'm advocating for, is no debt. I'm just, what we're strategically looking for is we have other buildings that are gonna be addressed at some point. Whether we're on this court or not, they're gonna be addressed. And so we are locking our hands, if you will, for what those initiatives might look like. In my opinion, if we take another bond out, we will get challenged. I, I, I believe that, and I've heard that in the community. And this county has never been petitioned against a bond. I think that would happen. So I, my, I'm not advocating, Commissioner, for no debt. My head, I, I was advocating for a little bit of a smaller debt, not negating the need for the sheriff's office at all.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could go to our community as a united group?
Agreed.
And we've yet to do that. In my three years that I've been here. We have never voted as a whole to have a budget. You've always had an able budget.
What's part of the process?
What will be the increase if we leave it at one twenty-seven?
Two, pretty much right even. It's gonna be about twenty-five percent over the effective rate. The actual rate is gonna be point six four six oh three, which is still lower than the current rate.
That's.
It's something to.
It's a lot of pressure.
To make it any more clear.
What was that?
Yeah, what, what was that now?
Because our new effective rate is lower than our current.
Yeah.
Even with the twenty-five percent increase, the rate's still gonna be at point six four six oh three. Your balance. Of the effective rate. When we recalculate the effective rate for plus six.
Give me a dollar amount on this.
Yeah.
Considering what the percentage of the increase would be, like it's twenty-five percent.
Twenty. It's two point two five. So leaving the county sad. So, um. And matter of.
Not stolen.
As a special commissioner, do you have any idea, any innovative thoughts on?
You know, I mean, I'll continue to advocate and I'll just be the little people voice over here and certainly the one that apparently causes trouble because I ask questions. But it's what I'm committed to do or I would be my seat.
That's, that's not what we're, it's not.
No, 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 I, I would love for us to start really talking about these things and looking to our departments to innovatively, creatively bring things to the table. Because the answer every year is it keeps growing and there are line items, but that is the truth and that is the reality that we live in. But the truth is, is that we don't have any incentives in place that we encourage our department heads to bring things to the table. And so, you know, it's easy to go day by day and business by business and then it's budget and, and then I'll make do with what I got. Even though there's a million dollar or six hundred thousand dollar increase within four years. And so it's a, it's a frustrating feeling.
I, I wholly agree with you. And that's really why I said, that we're going to, to initiate this strategic planning.
But it, it takes leadership even at our department level because we don't know the answers. I don't know the answers, I am not the subject matter expert. But, I mean, at this point, we, we owe it to our taxpayers to be asking these tough questions. And every government entity is having this conversation right now. If anybody read the front page of the paper, our taxpayers that live in the city are gonna have a very different life in the next five years. And so we operate in these silos and our taxpayers feel frustrated and rightfully so. And I feel frustrated as a taxpayer. But I think, I mean, I think we have to start looking at things really different and be innovative. And there are things, there are counties in this state that are doing some aggressive things and take a lot of what I would call sweat equity. Because it takes time to roll up your sleeves and think about things differently. But, you know, we'll keep doing this year to year.
Well, we have to keep doing it year to year and every, every year is the same thing. But let me ask you this, anybody that's listening. Is your household budget the same every year or does it go up every year?
Your house, you have a service spending.
Does anybody else just go up a little bit?
Yeah.
Sure. So does the counties, so does the cities, so it's a state. But it all goes up. So we have to go with that. And you, you can't, you can't look out there and tell me that they're spending needless.
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. A, and I think sometimes my comments get misperceived, that is not what I'm saying. I know that our department heads are working from their heart, I get that. But what I'm saying is that if we can try to look at things differently, even on a household level, when things go up, you start to look at things differently. Am I packaging my internet and my cell phone and TV? You know, what are things that I can start to do differently? Do I buy this type of grocery, but maybe I can do this cheaper one? Because, you know, so everybody does that at a very regular level. And so what I'm looking for at some point, because I'll, it'll be almost five years, so now I have a little tenure under my belt, saying that this is the process every year. And it is hard for our department heads to say, well, you know, I'll make do. It's an aggressive budget. But I'll be quiet. I'll just, I'll just vent you.
So, so Carrie, can you calculate quickly if it goes up point two five on a hundred thousand dollar, um, increase? Sheriff, I saw you did come up.
I mean, I'm just going as I, I mean, I know for us, and I. You say one, one time that we as department heads and related officials have to work on our, on our budget period. And honestly, I mean, I know that I'm speaking for myself, but I almost think I can speak for everybody in here. Ninety percent of us, I'll put it that way. I think we all are really trying to fight that. I mean, I could use about ten more people, honestly. I mean, you know, the jail is full of minerals out there that we're having to deal with on a daily basis that you guys have no idea what is going on out there. And I think that we are really trying our hardest to not come in here and beg for something that we really don't need. In fact, that was what I told that guy when I started. I said, don't even ask for anything. I mean, you go with what we have up. The things that are costing us more is something that we want to be in control of. You know, I mean, go back and look at our gas bill that apparently we had a faulty meter that has now jacked up our price almost a thousand dollars when they replaced a meter. We have no control over that. The food prices and all those kind of things, we don't have any control over that. Our, our health insurance that's going on out there for our inmates, yeah, we're required to, to, to place that on, and it's a burden that, that we have to take. But I, you know, I mean, I just, I feel like we're, we're trying our hardest and I understand what you're saying, but honestly, I mean. The people that are sitting in here are working their butts off to try to keep that down. Or they wouldn't be sitting here. You know, some people just leave or, and I'm not, you know, picking on anybody individually, or they don't even show up. I mean, I think we're really, I mean, I'm like you, I'm a taxpayer. And when I read a article in the paper of fifty-seven percent over the next five years, I'm going crud. I guess I'm gonna go live out the river because I don't charge you anything out there, I'm gonna go dig in the side of the hill out there. I mean, honestly, I mean, we're, we're a lot just as bad as you are. I, I really truly believe that. And I almost, I, I, I think I can stand in here for everybody to say that. I wish like heck, I could be like Julie and say, man, I'm getting rid of two people out and making bad things. You know, and down the road as the attrition comes, we look at that. But there's always somewhere else along the line that I've got, you know, increase in jail population, I mean, I don't, I don't have any choice. And a lot of it is the unfunded mandates that are coming through, even though they say we don't have, you know, unfunded mandates anymore. Well, that's garbage, that's ridiculous.
One example, Zach, since two thousand twelve. Our health insurance here for this county and our employees has gone up one point four million dollars.
And, you know, I just, I just wanted to throw that out there, I mean, I understand, I really do understand your frustration, but you also have to understand that we're, we're doing our best that we can too. I mean, I don't like looking up there and going, holy crud. Cause you know, you're looking at the paper and you're going, well, damn, the city's fixing to go up now, here at the county, it's fixing to go up too. Here we are, we're really gonna get hit hard with this year. So, you know, I mean, it's, we're trying, I promise. At least I know what I can say.
I wish we, uh, talked about how much each department saves each year. Uh, I know probably all of us have, well, I probably have a hundred thousand dollars that I haven't spent in my department. And probably everybody else has too. And that is what's going into this fund balance. And when we do transfer it out, it's, it's things that we have been, uh, real prudent in on. And I think everybody in here has done that, nobody's gone for their budget.
I mean, that's, I think that's one of the things that when I first got here, at the end of the, at the end of the year, oh, we've got all this money, let's go spend it. Well, no, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna throw it back to you. I mean, and that's what we try to do. You know, if we, if I can buy something this year versus next year, then okay, yeah, I'm spending that money, but at least I'm saving for next year.
And I think, and I think it's important we realize that, I really believe that in a moving to a one, till he's there and think that we've got the best, uh, county and department heads, uh, of anywhere. And, uh, we certainly appreciate all you guys. And, uh, certainly you can see some of the frustration that is building over, but it's certainly not to indict any of our, uh, folks that we work with on the basis. Cause we know how it's working for you. And I can say to you, a lot of that, we don't know, we don't realize, but, uh, we understand and we appreciate you standing in the gap and continuing to, to hold the line. And, uh, and it's not that we are frustrating coming out against you guys, not at all, it's just, uh, uh, trying to match up the numbers. And I know, uh, Carrie is, uh, is agonizing and frustrating as well as anybody, but, uh, uh, but we certainly depend on her to, uh, to show us and to work through all this. And it, it's just a little bit of frustration coming out, nothing to pill on you guys, we, we owe you an high esteem and I'll respect that much.
I think this quarter has been prudent today and yesterday in trying to cut back. And, uh, we've cut off a million dollars out of the public budget and, uh, so we are being prudent. We're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can with this county and the taxpayers. Again, our department heads are terrific people and, uh, I think you had something to say.
Well, I would just, I mean, I don't know where you are as far as, uh, giving the budget, but, um, I think speaking as an advocate for the employees. I mean, you haven't mentioned, I don't know if insurance is going up, but taxes are, I mean, so I just think, I'm gonna need to speak up for them.
I think we're gonna talk about that money, Cole, I think that Kate is gonna talk about that, it shows to go up a little bit. And, um.
I just didn't want to not be.
Right, and we, we've had it on about the employees and, um, we know we're gonna, we're gonna cover most of that. Kenny's gonna eat that. It's part of the increase.
And I think your question is, this doesn't address the COLA, if I heard you correctly. So you're advocating for an employee cost of living increases?
Okay.
Yeah, and this dollars do not include you.
Carrie, do you have a feeling for a thousand dollars?
All fifty-three.
I'm sorry?
All fifty-three, a dollar fifty-three.
Over the effective rate, but it's gonna be a lesson.
And that's taking the eight hundred thousand from the debt reserve fund balance.
Okay, this obviously is not a done deal because we, we still need to talk tonight. Um, I know we're gonna address that. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about today?
Did you cut my bench or just go in there?
You cut it through the bench.
It's all about you.
Card cable.
I'm gonna catch y'all's off. I'm running this off.
You can have one's in mind. You can have one's in mind.
Yes, if we abandon those storage tanks at some point, we will have to deal with them. Which is, uh, ballpark quotes and it will be fifty thousand dollars.
We have to.
We are in point to go ahead and try to transition everybody to the cars and the tanks can sit empty for a while. But as long as they're just saving, we're gonna continue to be in the second.
Add that to our strategic planning, we've got twelve topics, I'm saying interest that you.
That's, that again, I mean, that goes back to, when that came up, I mean, we were the ones that got inspected and we had to, we had to, we had to. Measure our tanks twice a day, which meant bringing in an employee on the weekend twice a day to measure those tanks.
To measure the level, to measure the level of fuel.
And so we had a pay overtime for an employee to come in on Saturday twice a day. And so, we had to pay overtime for an employee Saturday twice a day and Monday twice a day. So.
You guys, are you guys paying for the card, going to the cards?
Yes, in fact, we've already, we've already initiated that with our control guys and everybody else fills up.
You're just, you're just there?
Yeah, we are.
And you guys?
We're just waiting on the card. So, I mean, that, and that's one of those things that, I mean, it's, it's one of those things that I think in the long run, it's gonna save us a ton of money because, I mean, the penalties for something going wrong there is gonna cost us ten times more than whatever y'all got on this budget, I promise you. Everybody's been threatened with that. And so, you know, we, you know, like, the cost savings along just going to the cards for our control sake is, you know, overtime, like, six hours every, every weekend as well.
And it'll help us because we can take out all of our static fuel sources and everything else. So, we're, we're being able to pull everything out.
Okay. I think we all considered that, you know, just to fill them up or what we need to do. Is it cheaper to fill them or are you covering them?
I suppose it's about the same, the, uh, non-permanent fix is the same.
Okay. What did they take them?
You know, yeah, yes, thank you.
So, Carrie, is your budget, is your budget to offset the hundred thousand dollars somewhere?
Well, it may only be to interest us if something, because it can just sit there. Let me rephrase it, we can, but we still have to lock it around.
Yeah, eventually it becomes a super fund, so.
Is this something that, uh, our people can remove or we have to have? Yeah, three, seven, five, it's a very, uh...
I think one of the, three, three people examined that.
Who aren't, you know? Did you wish, although it didn't?
It was all those grant, but then I don't remember who did the third one. K and D Construction, I mean, it was some kind of mission.
Could you go across the screen and if we did plug in that hundred thousand, I'm looking at the rate, um, it'd be at six-four-nine somewhere.
I just have the, I just have the, just two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
And add it in, yeah? We have to, we need to. We need to. There's gotta be something else we can cut, there's just gotta be.
Carrie, could it be, uh, could we not budget that in, uh, when we're ready for it? We have the contingency amount that we haven't, I think roughly we spent one, two forty, two fifty, we have half the money in there. That maybe we could stagger it a little later in the year so that we don't touch that account too early if something unique did happen, but we have the money there, judge, as an option, without putting it in, kind of as a line item in the budget.
I don't wanna get too far into the contingency because it's always something.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I agree, that's why I was thinking, just, you know, since it's not urgent to, to remove them, you know, and we have that little need time of be responsible for them, but either halfway in the year or three, four in the year that we feel good, like, we've made it through the big home of what might happen. That's an option.
Florida county is biblical, so speaking of Florida, we've got farm. We just had, and Borgia, but I just went and moved back.
She's like, yeah.
Do you wanna do that, Judge, or you wanna plug it in separate?
We can, we can plug it in separate, we can do that.
Yeah, continue, continue.
Can do that for now, just to see, let's, this way, let's see what Mike says on Monday. And if there's any way, anybody can think of anything else they can cut, please do it. Call me, call Carrie, anything else, even as small as it can be, all of you can cut some, or anything, I notice. Get it down, take it down.
And, and he got to reading the CSCD and district budgets and stuff, is there any other things expected?
No, that's, that's just something that happens every year and then they, the state funded, but we, they, we, we pay it at the state reimburse, it's, Carrie, it's a bunch of, except for your salary.
Yeah, funding for reporters and purchasing, which is a security. Well, and actually, county pays, the largest majority is just the probation as well. They have a small state budget.
See, how do we handle that? Is that him? Because they always get raises. And we have to find it.
I think that means the board proves that they have.
I know, that's all it's about. Is that gonna, is that plugged in already or no? No, not plugged in.
Well, it's, it's plugged in here, um, but they are taking a hundred, a hundred thousand. How much have they taken out of the fund balance? A million, a hundred and eighty-five?
Yeah, they've budgeted to take, to take over a million dollars out of their fund balance this year, so. For what?
For their increases in some of their equipment.
Huh? Yay.
So, actually, I have another question, your question from the county, they'll just slide right here.
Interesting. Okay. Is there anything else we can discuss today, or this is eleven twenty-five and we're done? Rest of the day to produce something. Is there anything else, Karen?
We didn't really discuss the information technology part time in term of, and the application developer that was requesting to, uh, county to fund.
Where is that?
Yeah, it's not remembered, it was one of the last.
Is, does she care if it's on here?
Yes.
I already made notes on mine, I just assumed it was out.
What, thank you?
It's not really up.
It would look like this.
Well, in the interest of staying what we've done so far, I would say, let's see. We said yes, the questions got, we just fought time.
No, this actually did not get funded, this was a no in the budget. We are gonna allocate some dollars in the current budget to let her get cut. So, this line item was taken out.
Okay, there have been some changes since this request came in, so it's kind of complicated. I will hope Jason helps to discuss it or maybe try to explain it. Because this application developer position currently is empty, right? Because we moved, we moved a couple people up the role of resigns, so this position is empty. And we had a meeting in the office with several of the centers, the special ones, the funds that were available and like management, the money we could use for insurance.
Intern for IT?
An intern for IT, specifically to help with the Tyler project.
And Caroline spoke to us in representation. And that's included in your budget, those dollars were in there.
It is, but if, if that reference management funding issue is for the intern in this application developer position, we'll not have any funding.
We're, we're not looking at it, still, I guess.
You're not gonna fill it, okay.
No, we're not, we're looking at it.
So, we can just mark that one?
Correct.
Okay. So, the first one on there, we've marked off, collections is marked off, the elections administrators kept in, the salary change. And then below that additional personnel request, that's the intern that we just referenced. And then JP precinct two, part ten, third, we've marked that off. And then DA prosecutor and support staff, that's kept in. And then Robin Bridge, that's the one. Is that correct? What are you missing, Carrie?
Anybody else think of anything, anybody? You guys say anything?
I'm, I'm, I won't be here, but I'm gonna say it. He was asking about, you know, the private department, to figure out something to cut. They beat budget, it's, it's salaries, office equipment, a copy, total. The only thing that's not static is the crash. We raised travel last year, probably a lot of it. And from the cutback, where it was, would be two thousand dollars. And that's two thousand dollars, but if you would allow an increase in your IT fund while setting that, I'm not against that. Okay, the IT fund, we had ten thousand when we traveled, we went to twelve thousand when we traveled. That's what comes out, that technology fund for that travel doesn't affect money that you can use for other things.
But, but you have, there's some requirements of, you have to, you're very specific on that limit, the sessions you need to be there.
No, not anymore, used to and did, but now everything is in, it's cognizant of that.
The technology?
Yes, so they, they tender all the education to have at least some form of technology training.
Okay.
So, I, so, so I'm not against knocking it back to where it was as long as we can increase office.
Home technology.
Is that okay, Carrie?
Is Lusha confident that your schools qualify for the technology term?
They have, I was, I was amazed, everything this year we have went to qualify. But I would say that changed, so.
I'm not against, and so that was, um, looking for the march. And you're just speaking for your court?
I'll speak for all four of them, buddy. The bottom line's the same.
Yeah, yeah.
For us, for y'all this year.
As long as attending schools that qualify for this, because I know there's restrictions on how those dollars can be.
I can say all the other JPs attended the same, attended schools also that, that would qualify.
So, everyone outside of Judge Horton has four thousand in travel, and so what you're saying?
Well, she had.
She had five with her new clerks going to school.
So, what, just a one-year thing?
Yeah, so you're saying bump that down to two, you're saying for all JPs and then offset that in the technology?
Up a ten to thirty-five hundred.
Oh, okay, as opposed to four?
Where it was as before last year. But brings it the ten thousand to twelve thousand and you have two.
Actually, don't worry, two thousand.
The ours, it would be three thousand. I didn't know she could ask for that.
All right, anything else? Okay, so, uh, we will reconvene on Monday and consider Mike's budget and then we'll go from there. Carrie, who's the next? After we do commissioners for planning, who's the next?
Are we having any of those in the evening, Judge?
Yeah, I'm having stuff for the evening, right?
Um, um, that is, I just want the tax increase. Yes.
And that was reset to eight, up there. It's going to, we have to.
I'm just gonna walk, knock ahead of that. Okay, is everybody okay?
Get you in next.
Are we adjourned or? Are we, we're, 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 we're gonna start all, we're gonna start all, we're gonna start. Okay.
Judge, just one, one question. Are you ready to put together a proposal to actually send out to everyone that you wanted to that? Another day, but we're.
She waits out to talk to Mike. Got you?
Yeah, it's just that everybody will get a copy and change it so they're ready to file, so. Just so everybody knows.
Is there, is there a deadline on the filing? Like, so, do I have to do it?
No, the only, the only real issue with that is theoretically, it has to be at the time for any elected officials to file for salary agreements if they want to.
Okay, well, you know what we could do, we could just file it like it is, but Mike.
No, I think you're, I think you're okay here.
Okay, okay. I'd rather wait after Mike has it, okay? Okay, we have a adjournment.